There may, I know we go through a second reading and a final reading eventually later on this month. So there might be a day here that might be tweaked. But for the most part, this is 99.5% complete. And when we look at this calendar, it's a very traditional calendar. Our kids are, the first day for our students will be on the day, the Tuesday after Labor Day. We have the typical Thanksgiving and Christmas recess. February recess is still there. Our April recess is the very, very first week in April next year. And then we have graduation in the last Sunday in June, like we typically have done. But it's, again, it's a very typical school calendar with four superintendents conference days worked in. Questions at all after this first read?
Karen, when is the opening day for the opening day ceremonies? Is that the?
The opening day ceremonies will be on the 30th. It'll be the same.
Okay. Thank you.
August 30th.
August 30th. That's the one that the board would usually attends, eight o'clock at Schrader.
Okay. Any additional questions? Yes, you have a question? Oh. Can we have a motion to?
No, I didn't.
Well, we don't have to do a motion for the first read, only for the second. Is that right? I don't remember.
You should take a motion.
Okay. We'll take a motion for, to approve for the first read of the calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mike and Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we'll bring it up at our next meeting for the second reading.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. The seeker resolution. Mr. Freeman?
Yes. So the seeker resolution is anytime we do a capital project, we need to go through a seeker resolution. This one is in regards to $100,000 project we're doing this year at, I'm getting myself confused. This one is at Plank South. Next year is at Clem South with, which I'll show in a little bit here. So this is just a standard type two resolution for seeker for the capital project, for the $100,000 capital project.
Does anybody have any questions?
And for the people that may not know what a seeker is, it's the environmental.
It's the environmental impact of what we're doing. And with a $100,000 project, there's not a lot of environmental impact we can do that would warrant any kind of action from community or groups.
So moved.
Okay. Mike and Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Property conveyance.
So I have up here, so everybody can see, is a property line conveyance. A couple of months ago, the town of Penfield approached the district and Penfield Central School District. And I'm not sure if you guys could see, kind of over there, I'm going to try to take you through it. So this property right here, that's all in green, this field, this is in the Webster Central School District. Here's our dividing line. This neighborhood is in the Penfield Central School District currently. House sitting right here, over the past several years, since there's nothing going on with this property, you might notice there's this little kind of ditch, what is it, swell? Swale, swale, yeah. It's a swell, swale. That kind of creates this natural buffer between the properties over here and the actual property in, that's in the Webster Central School District. So homeowner on this side has been tending to and taking care of some of this land that is not on his property. So we were approached, because it's been approached to the town of Penfield, that the person that actually owns the property in Webster Central School District is going to carve out a sliver for that homeowner, since they've been taking care of it, and add it to their property that's in the Penfield Central School District. So there's a couple of different avenues that I believe I outlined for the board. So one is we could do nothing and let it go, and it will always be in the Webster Central School District. But then that compounds the problem now. All right, whoever lives at that property moving forward now has school choice. They could pick Penfield or Webster. When it's smack, you know, there is no Webster track around here, so we'd have to send a bus all the way around, actually Scribner Road, Bay Trail Middle School, and Scribner Road Elementary to get over there to bring kids into Webster. So it's really not the most cost-effective manner of doing that. Plus, we'll never get the property taxes for that house if somebody wants to do that, because it's still in the Penfield Central School District. So our recommendation is, is just to clean up this property line, and it's being officially moved over to them. So we will move that sliver point, I think it's less than 10th of an acre that will be outlined, to that property, leaving the Webster Central School District and going over to the Penfield Central School District. It's a couple hundred dollars on the tax roll. We have several of these popping up. We actually have one more probably in the next couple of months over on Embry Road that we'll be presenting to the board to clean up that boundary line between Penfield and Webster as well.
Is the cul-de-sac in Webster?
No. This is, this whole track is Penfield.
But I, there was a piece that used to be.
Right.
Because we, to get to the house, to get to a circle, you had to go through the Penfield School District. But then the circle was technically Webster, which.
Right.
Many, many years ago.
Many years ago.
I don't know if that was the circle, but.
Here, for houses.
That's our dividing line.
This is, this is loosely our, you could use Embry Road as the dividing line.
Right. North, south.
There's, there's a little differences here and there. But yeah, this is, this is still ours, this little part.
It's not even worth, not even worth handing over.
So even if it's a sliver of your property is on Penfield, you still have the choice?
Yeah. So this is actually a very interesting concept going on right now, because recently our neighbors in Wayne decided to close an elementary school. Well, there's a whole neighborhood that backs up to the Penfield Central School District that's a wide open field. Those neighbors are asking the owner of that field to purchase a sliver of their land, so then it becomes Penfield Central School District.
So then they can go to Penfield.
So either, you know, which is even, oh my God, two county, cross borders. I couldn't, that's, that's a headache. Or they'll have school choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
Second.
Linda, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. And one final bus proposition resolution.
Yep. What you have is just the resolution to begin the process to borrow for buses, to get that as proposition number, technically one, on the budget vote, after the budget vote itself. You know, pretty straightforward. And I'll get into more details during the workshops of what we're actually purchasing for transportation next year.
This is roll call.
Yep. So do we have any questions?
I was just going to ask a question, Brian. Probably everyone knows, but being new. Is, is this part of like a long-range plan where you have a plan for every year of how much has to be?
Yes. We, we change, it varies a little bit every year, because not every year we'll buy a wheelchair accessible bus. Some years maybe we'll buy a couple more mini buses, depending on, you know, we look at it on a year-to-year basis. But in general, our format, our plan is 10 years, 100,000 miles for our buses. So we try to, you know, stick around that. You know, we've had history where some models don't make the 10 years, because the bodies are rusting out, and we have to do something at seven or eight years. But from a state perspective, they give us aid on that bus for five years and five years only. So, you know, once it's on five, any costs are on us, so that we can extend it out.
Thanks. Okay. And just a quick explanation about, this is an intent to purchase, but if for some reason the resolution did not pass during the budget vote.
Correct.
Then we wouldn't be.
We're not on the hook for the buses.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Mike, Jan?
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
Sue?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Motion carries. All right. Now we're going to move on to the budget workshop. So our esteemed staff here has embarked on a month, several month process of creating a budget for our, for our view. And tonight, we're going to look at our revenues, expenditures in buildings and grounds, transportation, and actually everything except for staffing.
We're really not getting into the instructional area.
Right.
It's kind of more the operational.
Not staffing, right.
Yeah, more the operational and back office type things.
Right. So, and then we'll have another budget workshop in a couple of weeks, and hopefully the state aid numbers will be more firm, and we'll be talking about staffing then. And by then, we'll have a better view of what our student counts will be and what our high school and middle school students will be, what their desires are for class participation next year. So having said that, Brian, if you'd like to start, I would appreciate it.
Sure. We're going to just start with a little revenue overview. We've done a quick glance at a previous board meeting at our tax cap, what number that is going to be, and kind of the first run of what the governor's proposal for state aid means to us. So we'll just look at some of those other expenditure areas or revenue areas, get into some of those operational expenditure areas, you know, do a little overview, and then just questions and work our next agenda in as well. So what do our revenues look like? We've already set our tax levy. That's the cap of what we can do. That is us at the cap, $1.9 million increase, right, right a little bit above 2% for next year. So that, that's set in stone. We submitted that actually last week over February break, because there were going to be no further changes. I don't see any further changes happening in the next month, month and a half. I know that's out there, last year they passed the changes for BOSI's capital exemption and a couple other little tweaks. I'm not expecting any of those regulations to come through during this budget process, which would have us come back and look at that number. Pretty confident that's what we're going to be at. Sales tax, that number has remained flat between '16, '17, and '17, '18. Our pilots, our payments and a little of taxes going up, $250,000. Like I presented before, we lost that on the tax cap calculation, because when you compare year to year, last year it was a million, next year it's going to be 1.25. That difference hurts us on the tax cap. We lose that. But like I said, we get that back here. We have a revenue increase on a separate line item of $250,000. Our miscellaneous revenues are going up by about $175,000. Two, two reasons there why we're expecting some increases. One, our continuing ed programs, we're expanding, and they're extremely popular, especially a lot around our aquatics. We've opened up a whole Sunday, and we still have wait lists across the board, so we're seeing increased revenues in a lot of the programs there. Jane Lasky has done a fantastic job, along with Ben and Brian, running the aquatics of really reaching out to the community and see what the needs are for some well-attended programs. The second part of that is, we're purchasing more BOSI services, so we are receiving a larger BOSI's refund. How BOSI's works, the more you buy, the more age you get. But also, BOSI's cannot end the year with money on their books, so if there's any money left over, they refund it to the component districts based on how many services you buy. So we're buying some more services, especially around hardware, technology, and the like. So we're expecting an increase in what we're going to get back from BOSI's in that refund. So that's why we have an increase in our miscellaneous revenues between the two years. Our appropriated fund balance would stay the same, 5.5. That's the amount of money we have locked in to offset our tax levy. And that's one that's grown over time. If you have end of the money at the end of the year, you could either put it in reserve or appropriate it to lower your tax levy. Historically, we've always tried to do a combination of both and put some towards reducing the levy. But once you reduce the levy, and you got to, you got to have that money every single year, otherwise the levy goes up the following year. So we've left that as stable as possible. Reserves, I put a big TBD. That is of special concern, because that's one of our overarching goals, is to try to reduce our use of reserves. I think at every opportunity that I've presented for long-range planning, any workshop, I've always tried to drag that number down. So I've left that to be determined for '17, '18, because we'd like it to be less than this. How much less would depend, I think, a lot on what happens with the economics of state aid. Our state aid total would be $48,664. It's roughly similar to what was, we looked at when the governor's proposal came through. You know, it's our foundation aid going up, $444,000 from the governor's first run. Our BOSI's aid, I took a closer look on that, that's going up 207. Our building aid is going up 259,000. But we're also losing a little bit on our excess cost aid and our instructional materials aid. So in all, it's going up 864. Over half of that is because we spent money somehow, somewhere. So it's not a true aid increase. We're spending it to get it back. Half that increase is because we spent money someplace else, whether it's a building project or with BOSI's. So I think that's a very important differentiation. So when you look at these numbers, all I did was total them up, left the reserves out to see, all right, what, what number are we at for revenue? And it's about $165 million. So to, to get to this, we'd have to keep our budget increase to about 2%. So, you know, use that and see how we go. Any questions on the revenues? Okay. So buildings and grounds, I could turn it over to Mr. Cunningham here, he could give you a little overview of some of the things we're doing and some of the things he's been working on. But I think next year, '17, '18, is maybe a year of taking a deep breath before we unleash a large capital project on the staff.
Yes. This summer, we're really looking forward to doing a lot of repairs in-house, in terms of getting back to the basics. With the exception of the possible two, definitely one 100 capital, 100,000 capital outlay project. We're hoping the taxpayers will vote in the other, both at Clem South, Plank South is done already. So with those repairs, we're looking to do some mortar repair on the edge of the roof that wasn't completed, and work on the fitness center. Schlegel was done in the past through a grant, so we're looking forward to upgrading the locker room areas, turn them into fitness centers at Plank South and Clem South, and also some transformers, repairing those or replacing those through this process.
Yeah, the three sister schools, so Schlegel, Clem South, Plank South, all have those locker rooms that are the same. And so they've turned them into OT, PT, multipurpose areas. And so one of the things that we're looking to do is to pinpoint that, clear them out, and so they're multifunctional purpose rooms instead of locker rooms, because nobody's using locker rooms at elementary school. So it's really a way to recapture some space in a positive manner.
So what we did, we met with the principals, we met early this year. We combined discussion about the upcoming projects in the future and this year's budget process, so that we can really define what can happen and what we expect to happen. Once again, as always, we prioritize those on health and safety, then the impact on program, and then aesthetics.
So when we look at the numbers, overall, the B&amp;G budget going up 2.69%. A couple, really two line items. One, salaries. Why are they going higher? We have a very robust student worker program. I think that's really an envy of any district. Blaine and the staff does a great job with the college kids that work for us all summer. But with that comes, they are impacted by minimum wage. And so that is a huge cost increase. Do we want to scale back what we do with those kids? I personally would not want to, because I think it's a great program, and we've emulated it with some other departments, namely technology, we're doing the same thing with. So I wouldn't want to see that get hurt. So we're going to see a little bit larger increase in salaries because of that minimum wage increase for those kids. I mean, we're, we hire close to 50, so it, it's a, it's a pretty good impact when we talk in the summertime, and they come back for breaks as well. So you see that increase. Also, BOSI services kind of looks like it's a very large increase, getting skewed perhaps by the size of the number when you look at the percentage to the dollar. But one thing really is influencing that is our badge ID system. You might see we've transitioned. The old company went out of business, no longer doing it. So we've had to find a new one. So we found a new one. It's actually a more robust, I think, system. Blaine, would you agree?
I agree.
It's good. I had it when I worked in Cortlandt and a couple other districts I'm familiar with. But it's a little bit more expensive, so that would be the reason why the BOSI's increase is going up here. That security cost is associated right here. We get eight on it the following year, but it is, it's a budgetary increase going 1 to 1. So overall, when you look at it on the line item, it's 2.69%, with those two areas being the, the two driving costs. Everything else we've been, will be able to hold flat from last year. A lot of that has to do with, luckily, the lead testing will be done. That was unexpected cost this year that put a little strain with our staff as far as overtime and additional materials we've had to buy that we weren't expecting. So with that cost coming down, we could, we could do everything else at where we're at now.
That's where you have to.
Yeah. Right. So you see the pictorial version, you know, salaries are dominating, see how everything else is broken up. You know, 2.69 increase, it's about a 6.6% of the total yearly budget we spend on facilities, buildings and grounds overall. You know, with 13 buildings, you know, 11 school, two, you know, transportation facility in the B&amp;G, plus, you know, if you want to count Basket Road, we run out there, a lot of space, lot of acreage to maintain, all within, no FTE change for next year, with all with the same staff that we have now. So.
I'd like to remind the board too, in terms of the second biggest portion of our budget, our utilities, and we're flat again this year. It's a lot of the energy efficiencies that we're continuing to do, and really looking forward to when the project with the boilers and LED lighting takes place. Really excited, we're hopefully going to really see those numbers come down instead of just staying flat.
That's a great point. So if you, you know, as we present, once those get up and running, these numbers, natural gas and electricity, the first year after the new boilers go in, you should see some savings there. Once we get them up and running, that first budget season afterwards, we'll be able to have a good, good picture and ascertain what's going to, how much the savings are, because we know they will be there.
And which schools are getting that?
10 out of the 11. The only one that is not is willing.
It's moved.
Yes. So every other, every other building's giving boilers. Any, any other questions or follow-up on the buildings and grounds? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next up, our transportation budget. Really, I think a lot of credit for this is, we're fully staffed for the first time in a long time. And a lot of credit, I'll give it to Mr. Dave Swinson, who's not here, for a lot of the HR efforts, and a lot of the staff down there, Renee Reagan and the transportation staff, about really finding, recruiting, and bringing people on board. So you'll see a higher salary increase than in other budgetary areas, because we are fully staffed for the first time in a long time. One of the other things that we're doing is keeping more routes in-house. We used to farm a lot out to BOSI's. We still do, a significant amount, but we always try to look first now in-house. So we've had an increase in the amount of bus monitors that we're now hiring. So that's a, that's a cost increase. But overall, it's still financially beneficial, that cost increase versus the cost of outsourcing those to BOSI's for a service. All other line items held flat. And just one, one comment I want to make is, I know when we were planning for the capital project that was voted on December, at the, one of the initial workshops, we looked at a capital project for the bus garage as well. And we tabled that thinking we could, we could do that in May. But the weather has not exactly cooperated with us, because a lot of that project would revolve around expanding parking. And, you know, taking a look back there with the tree lines and, and, you know, what's, what is technically wetland versus what's not. So every time our engineers with LaBella tried to get out there, they couldn't make a good determination. And just a couple of weeks ago, they asked us to delay that. So I'm a little disappointed, because I was looking forward to, to making some progress over there. So that is a big picture transportation item. I just wanted to update the board on that. We'll have to delay any work on that until probably the summertime, when they could really get a good look at what's wetland and what's not.
Brian, are any of our salaries, transportation affected by the volume?
They are not. Well, excuse me, our bus drivers are not, the monitors are. There isn't enough monitors yet to really move the needle when it comes to that. We only have like nine or 10 monitors on staff. So they'll escalate with minimum wage, but it, it won't be a very large impact due to the size of the overall staff there.
Do we pay crossing guards, or is that volunteer, or?
No, we do not pay crossing guards.
That's town?
Yeah.
I think it's only one left. Is it one by Clem?
By Clem North, yes. I believe so.
Is that by State?
No, there used to be, but.
And Plank?
In the last 10 years.
Plank hasn't had it in years.
Right.
Okay.
So when we look at our line items, you see the salaries going up 3.83%. Like I said, because that is, we are now staffed to handle the, the volume we have, whereas years past, we weren't. So it's good, all of our line items, it's a great thing to have. All of our line items have been zeroed out. And this is why I said, the BOSI's contract transportation, we're trying to do more in-house. So you can see that increase is, is below 2%. So we're trying to, you know, little by little pull back. Our, our goal would be that, you know, a Webster kid's going to be picked up by a Webster bus eventually, regardless where it is. But we need that kind of construction project to make that happen. And then just a quick look, you see, you know, that BOSI's contract, I think this visualizes a little bit more, you know, how big of a, a deal that is for transportation when you look at it as the overall part of the cost. It's almost, you know, 20% of the overall transportation budget is outsourced to BOSI's. I think that's a, that's a substantial amount. You would expect fuel to be number two, but in our case, it's the outsourcing.
Fuel's been pretty stable.
Yes. Yep. No wild fluctuations. Been pretty good.
Good.
Any questions on transportation? So our bus proposition, what we're specifically going to purchase next year, 11 large buses, 66 passengers, two smaller, 30 passengers, and one wheelchair unit. Our total purchase price is $1,666,000. That's 14 buses total. And it's a, it's slightly less than what we were, our proposition was last year. It's a little less expensive. Okay.
Yep.
Moving on, we'll take a look at our, our central services. And really, this is, everything that's not instructional on the third floor is central service. So some of these areas that you see there. So a couple of things I want to point out. Overall, it's slightly up over 3%. You're going to see some higher costs at. Right now, Mr. Dave Swinson and myself, we're exploring the digitalization of all the records that are upstairs. So, when you walk in the hallway, you see those large cabinets for personnel files and even the student records, we think maybe could spill over to this. But we're trying to focus on all the business and HR records first and digitizing them. So, that could lead us in one of three ways right now. And it's why I'm, it's not a HR cost, it's a, we're putting it in business right now. But that could change as we get into next year. We're looking at products where maybe we're buying a BOSI service that does it for us with a software. And they actually have people that come and do it and, and set it up. Or, we just buy the software through BOSI's and we hire some staff, you know, some college kids or some retirees, part-time to come in and, you know, go through the files and send them through a scanner and upload them and do that. Or, we look at it as we hire more staff and have a homemade kind of database system for this. So, we're looking at three options. Don't know what it's going to be. So, we've set aside some additional funds because, you know, the software kind of gets a little bit expensive. So, that's where you see a little bit larger increase as well. We're budgeting for it in fin, in the financial department, even though it's a joint HR business type project. So, you know, we're trying to get ahead of that in anticipation of the Spry project to see how much we could reduce and clear out before we start doing construction to this building. You know, it's safe having to move it and move it again and then perhaps move it again. So, we think it would be money well invested to do that. Plus, that's, you know, that's the direction where everything's trying to, trying to go into. We're trying to, you know, when you want to look something up, go to electronic database. You know, don't walk into the hallway and pull it off a filing cabinet. So, you know, that's the, that's the largest increase for, for this part of the budget. Overall, it really doesn't have that large of an impact. It's overall, you're seeing, we're, we're going up 138,000, about 3%. Our BOSI's admin costs in this budget, this is in essence what we pay to be part of BOSI's. We're a little over 20% of the entire Monroe One BOSI's budget. So, we're expecting to pick up about one, a little less than 1.6% of their administrative costs next year. And this is the part of the budget it goes into. Any questions on any of these items?
I just have a quick question. What is unallocated insurance?
That's just insurance. That's our insurance. It's just the way, the state.
Oh, why do they call it unallocated? I've never seen that before.
Yeah. It's just, I grabbed it from.
Just that's what they're calling it?
From the, you know, the exact state vernacular. So, yeah.
But that's all of our insurance?
That's all of our.
Yes.
Insurance is for different, yeah, school districts.
Yeah. Okay.
So, then, just to take a look at that, what that looks like visually, you know, it's about 2.75% of the total yearly budget. Not a large amount of the budget overall, but, you know, you can see how the percentages break down. The BOSI's administrative cost is by far the largest expenditure we have, excuse me, in this area. Moving on to building budgets. Buildings were held flat from spending from the year before, except for two instances, two schools, Schrader and Plank South. So, when you got into the numbers and looked at it a little bit differently, Plank South has the highest enrollment of all of our elementary buildings and they have the lowest budget of all of our elementary buildings. So, we looked at a per pupil expenditure cost around the district and resized that, their budget. So, they got a, an increase to make them at par with, with the other elementary schools, which I think was due and was warranted. And then, at the high schools and the, to create evenness, Webster-Schrader had a small addition to now balance with Webster-Thomas. They have the same exact equal budget totals moving forward for 17, 18. They were not uniform in the previous year. So, those were two areas that we took a look at this year, even though we said, we tried to hold it flat. When you got into the numbers and looked, I thought those were two things that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later. You'll see, as we get into 17, 18, hopefully with the community's approval and we do the quarterly updates of our expenditures, a lot of the building budgets are repurposing their funds. A lot less on supplies and focusing on purchasing equipment for classroom redesign. I think it's an, it's a, a total result of the one-to-one initiative with students with the iPads K12 and the Chromebooks 345. I think they realize traditional furniture is no longer warranted. And so, they're looking at doing classroom design a little bit differently across the district. So, you're going to see more equipment expenditures going forward. You'll see some probably next time when we go over the instructional-type budget items, a shift in philosophy from less supplies, more equipment in the near future to get some of that stuff into the buildings and into the kids, you know, a different design.
Actually, Mike and I saw a classroom that barely had any furniture in it. Couple of tables around the outside. They did a lot of sitting on the floor and.
Yep.
Will you hear it's Brian?
Yes.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's really, you know, with the, with the technology now and the flexibility, I think that's, you're going to see more and more of that. And that, that came up through this budget process at every turn with the buildings and with the curriculum to, to have more equipment money to buy that furniture.
See more stand-up desks.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Jiggly chairs.
Yeah.
So, they can jigglin' around.
Oh, yes, so they can fidget.
And one, one of the things that helped that is when we did the one-to-one initiative, we also centralized all our printing. So, next year, all the, all the buildings that had toner and printer costs don't have those costs anymore because we've centralized those through technology. So, they get to repurpose that money as well. At the high school secondary level, it was close to $20,000 a year they were spending on toner cartridges. They won't have that expense next year because we're now buying it straight through BOSI's, getting aid on it. And so, they could take their $20,000 and repurpose it for some classroom design.
That's right. It's a lot of furniture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a lot of toner. So, overall, here's a four-year look. You know, when I talk, we changed two building budgets. The total increase for those two buildings was $14,493. Plank South is getting a $10,000 increase and the Spry-Schrader difference was $4,493. So, we're not talking big dollars, but, you know, they're now even smooth and I feel comfortable going forward that I could sleep at night that they're all fair.
Is Plank North a little bit higher because of UPK? Do you see there, there's a little bit higher or Plank North?
Yeah.
Would that be?
I, I won't say it's specifically because of UPK, but they are, this looks a little higher, but it's.
They're on.
It's within 150 bucks now.
Okay. Just the way it looks on the graph.
Yeah. Yes, you're right. They could be, it makes it look like it's larger than it really is.
Okay.
But you can walk across and, and split it right down the middle. So, next up would be athletics. Couple of things going on in athletics. Our salaries for contractual increase, we could do more, this is really coming out a lot this year. Could do more through BOSI's, which, you know, is a one-time expense, but a lot of the software and athletic coordination that we used to pay for on our own is now being done through BOSI's. So, if it's actually helpful, we'll get some more aid in the year following when that happens. But that's, that's a big change for athletics, that BOSI's is, you know, coordinating some of that so we could get aid on it. And contractuals for PE, you know, are going up, you know, the cost of running space for teams. It's gotten to the point where we had to take a much solid, a, a look at that and we were really under some budgetary pressures. And I'll get to that in a second. When you look at, that last line under contractual, you know, an additional $30,000 for next year, you know, could we have gotten by not doing the increase? But we're going to have to go borrow it from a different part of the budget to do that because our costs for ice time, you know, bowling alley, you know, any kind of, you know, some training services, you know, those are, you know, are going up year to year. And we've been able to kind of cap those. But going next year, I don't know if we could cap those any longer because we're, we're going to go, have to take it from a different part of the budget and short somebody else next year for some of those expenditures.
So, is that last bullet in the slide previous, is it for PE programs or is it for athletics?
Both.
So, we're, we're running out bowling alley for our PE classes?
Correct. We're sending kids, yeah.
Okay.
And for, yeah, it's ice hockey too.
I realize the ice hockey, that's the athletic team.
Skating.
Yeah, we do skating. Skating for PE.
For PE classes.
Okay.
In bowling too.
Got to get pickleball in.
It's tough to find a court.
Ah, we can build them.
So, you know, it's, it's wrapped up. It's PE and athletics together. Actually, PE is the one that it's more than athletics because there's more kids going over.
We send kids kayaking and all that kind of stuff.
For that, for those things. So, yeah, you know, I, I took a long look at what we expend there and really had to address that somehow and wanted to increase that line for next year. Community ed, you see a huge increase in salaries. And it's huge comparable to what you see there. Reason why is, almost 99% of the staff over there, besides four or five people, are on some level of the minimum wage scale. All our lifeguards, a lot of our instructors, they're all making minimum wage. So, next year, they're all going to go to 1040 during the year. Whereas, you know, two years ago, they're making 875. So, it's a huge jump because it's a huge population of students. We hire a considerable amount of lifeguards to cover all of our programs. So, it's why you see a, a large increase in our community ed spending. This is a lot of focused on our aquatics program right here. We are a small increase for instructors because we're expanding the course offerings. You know, we're always trying to respond to that. And I'm really a firm believer in growing the continuing ed program. So, that's why we have more money coming in. It's definitely offsetting our cost increase over here. It is by far, you know, more money coming in to offset this cost increase. Plenty of waitlists, especially in our Learn to Swim program. We could probably expand that. If, if there is an eighth day of the week, we, I mean, we could, we could run a full day of Learn to Swim programs again. They're extremely, extremely popular. Other than that, we're able to hold every other line item stable. I will say though, the acqua, the WAC is getting, you know, it's, it's getting close to being 20 years old. It's getting up there. So, there's some things that we might have to start considering to, that are starting to be disrepair. Blaine's been great through his budget and facilities, taking on some of that items when things fail, pumps, things of that nature. But it's looking, fairly soon, it could need some work done, especially tiling around the pool. Because we're, we do use it quite a bit and it's getting, it's getting worn and, and used to it. So, it's just something to, to keep in the back of the mind as we look for facilities going forward.
Yeah. Wow.
Blaine, can you, you want to add anything for that?
Yeah, especially with all the programs, all the exercise programs they do with bikes and things where they go off in the water, sometimes those pile cracks. So, you know, we help them to take it out. Like I said, moving forward, that's something that we should probably look at. We put those around it so it's not ceramic, it's more of a, more durable product. We put those around there. So, just items like that that we do in-house definitely make, help their programs.
Okay. Any questions on that before we move forward? All right, next is debt service. This one's pretty straightforward of what our construction bonds are, what our interest is. Small decrease year to year. We're paying more principal, so less interest. We're making a savings there. Same thing with our buses, gone up slightly because we, two years ago, had to purchase an extra wheelchair bus. So, that's a cost increase down, down the road here. And then, just same transfers, the $100,000 project, this is where it shows up, transfer to capital. And then, our transfers to the federal funds helps offset, this is our cost to pay that the federal government doesn't cover for some summer programs. Overall, you know, it's going down slightly, you know, pretty straightforward here on the debt service. It'll be a couple of years before you see the current project that was voted on December impact the budget. Have at least another year, maybe even two in the cycle before that, we borrow for that project. So, we could be looking at 19, 20.
People have asked when you're going to start. So, you won't be starting for another year or so.
Correct. We are finalizing the submittal. Hopefully, that will be sent in late April, early May to the state. So, we're going to do it in two phases. The first phase is all the elementary schools, the boiler, and the boilers and the playgrounds and the pegboard replacement and some of the ceiling tiles and lighting at the elementary. That's one package. That's going at the end of May. The Spry construction and the Thomas construction need, need a little bit more legwork on design. It's significantly more work. So, that is being done. That hopefully will be submitted about four months later in the fall. So, the project that goes in May, hopefully will get approval in six to nine months. So, six to nine months from that point, probably be November, we do a bid over the winter and we can get construction going in 18, summer 18, on the elementary schools. The other work, we're probably not thinking spring, till spring of 19.
Okay.
So, next, the benefits portion of the budget. So, if we had a meat and potatoes part of the budget, the meat would be salaries. Here comes the potatoes of benefits because it really makes up 80% of our entire budget is salaries and benefits. So, largest healthcare, we had a very large healthcare increase this year. Our TRS savings though, helps us out there a little bit. Our social security is going to go up more because of the minimum wage impact. As the salaries for minimum wage go up, our social security costs, FICA costs will rise in, in concert with it. Another piece of good nose, good news though, is our worker compensation costs next year will remain flat. So, generally, we've been having double-digit increases in that area, but this will be the first year we're able to hold them flat. Let's take a look real quick at pensions. So, this is our pensions roller coaster. On the left is the teacher's retirement system and the right is the employee's retirement system. So, you can see this goes back to 2000, 2001, where we had extremely small contribution rates. And then, we've gone up, spiked. TRS, we're starting to come back down a little bit. So, next year, our TRS pension cost is going to be 9.8% of our entire TRS salaries. That is a 12, almost 13, 12.97% decrease from this year, which is 11.26. So, a substantial savings to the district with that TRS reduction. ERS, on the other hand, is not going down. It stayed flat. It's at 15.5 right now. It's going to 15.3. When you take into account salary increases for people in ERS, it wipes out that minimal reduction in the rate. So, really, that's staying flat, no change. So, you could see where we're at with the two pension systems. Helpful savings on TRS, still higher than it was 10, you know, about 10 years ago. So...
Are these funds totally separate?
Yes, they are. One's controlled, the ERS is controlled by the comptroller and the teacher's retirement system has a board that oversees it.
I mean, the, the slopes, the increases and decreases there, you can see a little bit of similarities, but they're not.
Yeah, they're a lot sharper with the employee's retirement system.
Yeah.
You know, they, they're both very well-funded. I think they're the two best-funded pension programs in, in the country. They have different, slightly different investment methodologies. I think the spike on the employee's retirement system, there's a lot more people over here. I think the spike on the employee's retirement system, there's a lot more people over here, um, in the ERS, 'cause you're including all the state employees, um, in there, and some, all municipal workers. So, it's a lot larger, so, they tend to have, you know, a little different pattern of, uh, costs associated with the, with the pension program.
So, what is the required funding, you know, 80%, 100%, what is it?
Uh, they're both in the mid-90s of their entire liability.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere in that 95% range of total pension liabilities, where, like, Chicago's at 49%,
Right.
you know, or not Chicago, Illinois in general, I'm sorry, Illinois.
Okay.
So, here's our workers' comp. I'd just like to show this. You know, we've had an 82% increase from the 10-year period. It's added over a half a million dollars to our budget. But, this year, finally, we've gotten a flat year. I think, uh, we have been extremely vigilant as a consortium together, uh, and, you know, adjudicating claims and not allowing people to hang out there on workers' comp, to, to reduce our costs. Uh, more aggressive with workers' comp fraud as well, uh, from the consortium's perspective, with some investigators that go and, and look to see if anybody's really trying to defraud. So, um, it was, it was great news to hear that that was gonna, you know, remain flat when initial thought, we were thinking double-digit increases again, uh, for that. 'Cause this is tied to the state. The state sets the weekly rate. Um, and it's, it's up over 800 bucks a week in benefits, um, if you're on workers' comp. So, as that increases, um, as the workers' comp board increases, that, that translates to more costs for us. So, this is a bit of good news. Now, do you wanna skip over healthcare? So, we participate in two consortiums. Rash, one is a retirement plan, and Rash 2 is the bulk of where our active employees are. It's where, you know, your, our value and select and our high deductible plan are. Really, our base plan increases were much higher going into this year right now, as we're sitting, 'cause it's on a, you know, a federal plan level. It goes from January 1st to December 31st, when it comes to healthcare, where our budget is, um, July to June. So, it's tough trying to peg this six months that we're trying, you know, I was off. So, when I was sitting here last year, trying to guess what was gonna happen this time last year, I was off. I was, you know, I didn't hit what I had targeted, what our increase would be. Uh, part of that is based on the way the consortium is trying to fund itself. We have submitted to the state, uh, a new, an Article 47 for Rash 2. It was a way to avoid a lot of the penalties and taxes associated with the Affordable Care Act. We are hopeful that by June of 2016, the state would have approved our plan. It is now March of 2017, and the state has not approved our plan. So, we've had to incur substantial amount of costs and lost, you know, we thought we'd be saving money going into this fiscal 17-year by having that ready to go, that plan with the state. And since the state hasn't approved it, we're not saving it. We're actually losing more money. Um, so, to make up for that, the rates headed into this year went up considerably more than they had in the past. And as an example, value last year into 16 was a, uh, 5.9% increase, and it's 11.6 for this year. So, it was a substantial cost, 'cause the consortium as a whole was expecting to save, uh, over $9 million in taxes that we're not saving, uh, and did not plan for. Uh, so, it, the state is kinda, you know, dragging their feet, has, has hurt us a little bit with the rates, um, in that respect. So, it's why we're expect, you know, for the first half of next year, it's gonna be, um, a, a budgetary increase. That was more than what we expected. A bit of good news is retiree plans aren't going up at 63% like they were a year and a half ago. Uh, so, that, they've come back down. Uh, that, that was helpful. And our active enrollment has been fairly stable. We haven't seen any spikes or decreases in that, so that's been helpful for planning. And our retiree enrollment has increased by 10% over 16 to 17. So, we've seen, you know, as people have retired, uh, that obviously would increase as well. So, and then, what's the big question? What's gonna happen to the Affordable Care Act? How do we plan for that going into next year? We shall see. You know, that has a, a true cost on the business office. Uh, we've had to expend roughly $18,000 a year. Granted, it's through BOSI's. We're gonna get some aid on it. That was a cost we did not have two years ago, to be able to do all the reporting requirements to the IRS. We've had to incur that cost. Be nice if we didn't have to do that anymore. It'd free up some time and free up some funds, um, that we wouldn't have to spend. So, overall, you see health and pensions make up 75% of the benefits budget, uh, with health being 52, uh, TRS being a 17%, and ERS is only 6. Even though it's a, it's a fairly substantial cost, many fewer salaries, uh, to run against that compared to the teacher's retirement system, obviously. You know, even though workers' comp's gone up by over a half million dollars, it's still, uh, you know, a small part of the overall benefits budget. Now, here's the line items. You can see, we're saving money on TRS, almost three-quarters of a million dollars, uh, going down that 9.38%. Even though I said the rate was reducing by 12, salaries are going up, so it eats into some of that savings, um, for next year. FICA going up higher than, uh, a traditional rate, just because of, you know, the minimum wage impact there, so we're having it skewed a little bit. Generally, our salaries, it could be anywhere from, you know, 2% to, you know, a 3.5% increase, depending on what's going on. But, this is a little higher because of, um, minimum wage. And you see the health, what kind of substantial impact is.
It's huge.
That, you know, that increase, almost a 10 and a half percent, 2.1 million dollars. It's $150,000 more than our tax cap. So, our entire tax cap was eaten up by the healthcare cost increase, and then, we have to go find $150,000 more. Luckily, we have the TRS, uh, reduction to help out, eat that substantially. But, when you think about it in that terms, you know, think about it, okay, so our tax cap was, you know, a little over 2 million. Now, we have to go find another $150,000 to pay for that. And the governor's saying, we're only getting a $440,000 foundation aid increase. So, you know, it was, it, that, that was a substantial hit, um, for us, this year. Overall, though, just about 4%. When you said those TRS savings are really dragging, you know, dragging that down, that cost down for the district. Any questions? So, on, on the benefits, anything?
No.
No, we're, we're able to hold our dental and our buyouts and our HR, HRA plans flat, and our FSA administration, uh, flat, life insurance, unemployment, flat. Workers' comp C is flat. So, and ERS stayed the same. No real change there.
Right.
So, your work is cut out from when you go to Almay.
I guess so.
Foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah. It'd be helpful, you know, the minimum wage, if, you know, if they're gonna-
Right.
If they're gonna force us to escalate our costs over the time to over a million dollars, please help us pay for it.
So, the, just, so I have information for the trip. Did they give you a reason why they're taking so long to approve the, the, um, healthcare changes?
I think it's 'cause they've never, you know, we've actually actively sought out our local reg, legislatures and asked them to assist, and they've actually called and have gotten nowhere. Part of it is, is, I don't, we're, only two healthcare consortiums in New York State have ever tried this, and the only other one gave up.
So, it's, it's new, they don't really-
So, it's new, there's turnover there. They don't know what really, 'cause in essence, they're cutting their funding, 'cause part of that tax goes to New York State, um, as part of this. So, they would be losing some money, um, if granting this, this to the consortium. So, I, you know-
You get the comptroller tells us to find ways.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, you've already talked to our senator and-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's, you know, once they get to a spot with the submittal of the plan, um, and think they got everything answered, they come back with like 10 more questions.
Okay.
And answer those, and it's another 10 questions, eight weeks later type of thing. It's been very frustrating for, uh, the Board of Governors over the, of the plan.
Okay, so for foundation aid, our, our preference would be, I mean, you go and ask for more, more, more foundation aid? Or, and/or?
Full funding, though.
Well, you want full funding, but also you want, they're talking about recalculating the formula and redoing it. What, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, the, I, updating the, the data from the 2000 census to whatever they do, I'm all for, um, for that aspect of it. It'd be, it'd be hard for me to say exactly what I'd want them to do to it, without ever having it just go. And let's see how it works.
So, you just want it to actually run the way it's supposed to run-
Right.
-without being manipulated?
Correct.
So, that it's predictable?
Right.
I think that's a big thing, is that it's predictable.
Right. That is, that is very true.
Okay.
Any other questions on benefits, where we're heading? Okay. So, just to sum up what we've shown tonight, the left, we have our revenues total. You know, what are we gonna look at next time we meet? Finalizing state aid. Hopefully, we'll have some, something there. I'm not too confident. I'm, I'm sure what you guys have heard through NISBA, but I'm, I'm thinking this one's gonna go past, um, April 1, uh, for sure. So, I'm not gonna be going anywhere for April break. You know, I think it all remains to be seen what's gonna happen. The question is, will we need to use more or less reserves based on that? And then, so what we presented tonight is 81 million dol, 81.5 million dollars. And we still have our instructional areas to go. And then, you know, any updates for what we presented tonight, um, that we'll make, we'll present, um, as well at the next workshop.
Okay. And that workshop is at 6:30 on March 23rd. Three weeks from now. Alright. No more questions?
No questions, alrighty.
Makes sense.
Thank you very much for all the work you've done so far.
My pleasure.
And for the work you're gonna continue to do. So, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.